All right. I'd like to call this meeting of the Town of Ryanbeck Planning Board for December to order. I believe that the agenda stands. I don't think anything's dropped off or jumped on, so I think that's what we have here. Could I hear a motion to accept Art's meeting consultant notes?
Yes.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Very good. Okay. Let me see. What minutes do we have available?
Minutes, October 21st.
Okay. Has anyone had a chance to read those minutes from October 21st? Or remember reading those minutes?
Yeah.
Could I hear a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
I don't believe I have any correspondence or non-agenda item except for one. I was talking with Art about our schedule coming up. We're going to have a very busy spring, it would appear. And Art has suggested that for January, for March, and for May, we schedule a second meeting, which would be the first Monday of each of those months.
No. You're reading them.
Oh, I'm sorry, the third.
It'd be the third.
You're right. It's too cold to remember these things. The third Monday of January, March, and May.
March 17.
So how do we feel about this idea?
I'd rather do that than be here well into the night.
I think it's a good idea.
Something we can work with. And if we needed to schedule further, we could. And if we find that we don't need one of those second meetings, we can certainly give adequate notice that we won't be holding it. But at least it's on everyone's calendar, so everyone's aware it's out there. So if everyone is amenable to adding the third Monday of January, March, and May to our schedule, could I hear a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Melody?
Any opposed? Okay, very good.
Melody, you've got a calendar there. That was a January 20th, March 17th, and...
January 20th, March 17th, and May 19.
19, okay. So no apparent conflicts in terms of holidays or anything?
We actually could do it in June as well before we start getting into the crazy holiday schedules.
Yeah, yeah. We'll see what, you know.
And the other thing that we're doing, we've been requested by the town board to do a request for qualifications for our town engineer and town planner. And I've sent this out to you. Woody and Melody are working with me and Joni on that. I've asked you all for any questions you'd like to add, and then once we put this together, we want to circulate it around for all of you to look at. What basically we're doing is formatting this as requesting engineering help and planning help if necessary in the effect similar to the ramble situation where Morris did not work for us. The town board has asked us to do this. They're not asking us to change anything. They just would like us to look and see what's out there. I don't want to put something out there suggesting that we're looking to change things and give people the wrong idea, but I think it's not a bad idea to have a list of backups in the event that we do have a conflict and someone, we need to go to someone, and we don't have to go through a whole process at that time, hold up applicants. So that's the way that's going to be working out now. I know Jesse has sent me some good information. Please get anything else to me and to Joni, and then we'll start drafting this, putting it together. It's not the top of the list of anything to do. We have plenty of business to do also, but I think it's something we can, you know, over the next couple of months anyway, get that all taken care of and get that done. So that's about all I had to say for the next 60 seconds.
Okay. And the attached, or maybe under separate cover to your meeting notes, I provided some information to the board regarding the updated seeker forms, as well as the additional tools that have been developed by D E C, including the E A F mapper and certain workbooks on the full and short forms. Michael and I discussed this, and in that, the January 6th meeting will not have an extremely heavy agenda. What we've agreed is that we're going to set aside perhaps 45 minutes at that meeting, where I will essentially go through in presentation format, in Q and A format, the outline that you received. And in fact, as some new projects come in, we'll start for the first time working with those forms. Probably the first time you're going to see the full E A F, as for instance, is with the Rockledge.
Blackledge.
Rockledge Development. So we'll plan on having that time period set aside for that on the January 6th agenda.
Very helpful. All right. And I think this brings us to our first public hearing. The Office of J. William Commissar, L L S, for Allen Ryan III, Allen Ryan IV, Melissa Kaiser and Sally Shaw, New York State Route 9 and Mill Road subdivision plat. Continuation from November 18th, 2013, of public hearing on application for subdivision plat approval to authorize lot line alteration between parcel 1A and parcel 2 on filed map in the rural agricultural RA 10 district in the town's local waterfront revitalization area, resulting in a 10.39 acre residential building lot and a 31.11 acre agricultural use parcel being an unlisted action under seeker, subject of application to the Z B A for area variance.
And I am happy to report that following the public hearing at the zoning board of appeal, the board considered and voted in favor of the project. So I have a...
Key paragraph, Michael, is paragraph nine on the back page.
Yes. Okay. According to the zoning board of appeals, after due deliberation, grants the requested area variance from town code Article 101-6.2, as well as Section 125-21A of the town law and Section 4A of the zoning law, reducing the road frontage requirement from 400 feet to 60 feet as set forth in the application and as represented at the public hearing pursuant to its authority under Article 11B 3 of the zoning law. And they go and say the granting of this variance does not absolve the applicant of having to seek any other required permits or approvals, which is what they're here for today. Okay. So that's what we were waiting for. Any questions, members of the planning board? Any questions or comments from the public? Okay. I think we're in a position to close the public hearing. Could I hear a resolution to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Well, I meant a motion, of course. A second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Very good. Okay. We have a resolution of approval after our next public hearing.
You've got time to deal with it.
Do you have time to do it now?
I think we've got time now.
Bottom page two, onto three.
I will do this quickly.
A few blanks to fill in in numbered paragraph one. That date is November 26th, and the dimension is 60 feet.
Okay. Okay. Here we go. The Town of Ryanbeck Planning Board hereby access follows on the August 1st, 2013, application by the Office of J. William Commissar, L L S, for Allen Ryan III, Allen Ryan IV, Melissa Kaiser and Sally Shaw, for sketch plan review and subdivision plat approval under town code chapter 101 subdivision of land, to authorize a lot line alteration between parcel 1A and parcel 2 in the rural agricultural RA 10 district in the town's local waterfront revitalization area, the result being the creation of a 10.39 acre residential building lot and a 31.11 acre parcel intended for agricultural use. All is depicted on a surveyor's map entitled Lot Line Revision Between Parcel 1A and Parcel 2, filed map number 10726, prepared by J. William Commissar, L L S, dated July 9th, 2013, and revised to October 18th, 2013, and otherwise described in the short E A F coastal assessment form and other supporting documentation, and both subject of an application for area variance submitted to the Z B A for relief from the minimum lot frontage standard within the RA 10 district, and being the proposed action subject of a negative declaration determinate of nonsignificance heretofore issued by the planning boards. One, acknowledges the Z B A's grant of an area variance on November 21st, 2013, whereby relief from 400 feet to 60 feet has been granted from the minimum lot frontage standard set forth in the RA 10 district, this being sufficient to accommodate the creation of by subdivision proposed parcel 1A. Two, finds as noted above review by the town's waterfront advisory committee and considered prior to the issuance of the aforementioned negative declaration, the proposed construction to be consistent with the current coastal policy set forth within the town's L W R P. Three, approves the application for subdivision plat approval and authorizes the chairman to stamp and sign the subdivision plat upon the applicant's satisfaction of each of the below conditions and/or requirements within 180 calendar days of the planning board's adoption of this resolution. A, submission of subdivision plat drawings in the number and form specified within town code chapter 101, including thereon all required stamps, seals, and certifications. B, stamping of the subdivision plat is non-jurisdictional subdivision or for filing purposes only by the Dutchess County Health Department. Three, submission for review by the planning board as to the sufficiency and subsequent recording the Dutchess County Clerk's office simultaneously with the filing of the approved subdivision plat drafts of consolidation or merger deeds whereby each of the annexation parcels will be combined with the parcel to which it is being annexed. Thus obviating what otherwise be the creation of non-complying parcels. D, payment of any outstanding fees or reimbursable amounts due to the Town of Ryanbeck with respect to the submission, review, and processing of this application under town code chapter 101, the town's fee schedule and related executed escrow agreement. Could I hear a motion to approve?
One changing word. On numbered paragraph two, it's not meant to be construction consideration.
Okay. Consideration.
Okay.
Could I hear a motion to approve?
So moved.
Could I hear a second?
Second.
Any discussion? I'll poll the board. Richard?
Aye.
Jesse?
Aye.
Melody?
Aye.
Woody?
Aye.
Sharon?
Aye.
And I will vote aye. So it's done. You're very welcome. And this will go in Joni's file. Oke do. Let's see where we are now. We can do this now, okay. Our second public hearing, Paul Matthews, Old Post Road subdivision plat, conductive public hearing on application for subdivision plat approval in matter of proposed consolidation of tax map parcel 61700-00423704 and 486696, totaling 13.66 acres in the L W R A and the local and the rural countryside RC 5 district being an unlisted action under seeker.
Good evening.
And?
And all the certified letters were sent, and all the documentation where I am representing both parties has been submitted to Jones.
Yes, that we did see. So we're all set to go for public hearing. I guess you just want to tell the public what it is that you're proposing to do.
Okay. Mr. Matthews would like to sell 3.4 acres of land on Old Post Road to the Sarukas', who own a 10.3 acre parcel, 10.26, and he'd like to buy that parcel. So we're just basically doing a lot line adjustment to remove the line between those two parcels.
Okay. A couple of things have come to light since we last spoke with you, and part of the issue we have, part of one of the questions we're having here, is the buildability of the lots, given that the one parcel on Old Post Road seems to be entirely either within N W I or D E C wetlands? And the other one, of course, is landlocked, which I assume is why you're trying to put the two together, so that you have access to the one, the rear parcel, to get to Old Post Road?
I have no idea why the Sarukas family wants this lot. I mean, I don't think there's any plans to build on it. He basically has a landlocked parcel that he'd like to get access to, to Old Post Road.
Okay.
But as far as any, he doesn't have any desire to build a house on it, or as far as I know.
Yeah. I'm not...
Would that be subject? I'm just curious. Basically, we're talking about a lot consolidation.
Correct.
So why would we be concerned with buildability? It is what it is if someone comes in with a permit.
I think that, basically, in the subdivision regulations, it requires that two subdivision and lot consolidation never used to be considered subdivision. For some reason, now it is considered subdivision.
Yeah, I remember you saying that.
Through subdivision, we're supposed to only create buildable lots.
Ah, okay.
And the actual sort of criteria is it has to be 75% dry. And I, these are the maps that, you can see that...
So technically, this is something that wasn't really...
I think years ago, what probably happened, someone just cut these things up well before zoning. I know they're all throughout town. We have landlocked lots and things like that. But...
I'm just wondering what the issue is. If it's unbuildable now, it's going to be unbuildable in the future.
Well, that's the, the problem is for the planning board to create, knowingly create an unbuildable lot.
Are they both unbuildable now, though?
Well, one has no access, no road access, the second one, and the other one...
But are they both unbuildable because of...
Well, you can't build if you have no road access, no access to any sort of road.
Okay.
And the other problem...
The other one, buildable period, since there's no access, and one's wet...
As they stand now, I would, it's questionable.
But with the addition of this to the 10, you're saying with 13.6 acres, that's an unbuildable lot?
The question that I would have, that in order to determine buildability, we would need at least a letter from an engineer saying, yes, you can get a well and a septic on it, since there's no village water or sewer or anything like that.
Well, there is village water.
There is village water to this?
Yes, water. Yep.
So it would just be, then you'd have to put in a septic, some septic.
Right. And you'd just have to stay 100 feet away from the wetlands, if I understand it correctly.
Yes. Also, access, I assume would be off of Old Post Road.
Right.
And...
That's where the water is.
So it'd take, you'd need D O T, certainly for the curb cut, and actually, Old Post Road's a town road, so you'd need town, you know, from Kathy. And you'd also need D E C, a D E C wetlands permit, to go through the D E C wetland to get to the rear of the property. And these would be required.
I'm just questioning the fact that this makes it, it may make it possible to have a buildable lot by doing this.
Right.
And you, and we have to prove that, is what you're saying.
My understanding is the planning board, through subdivision, can't knowingly create an unbuildable lot.
Well, if you're not creating one, if there's unbuildable, it's already there.
Yeah, I agree. And the thing that, the confusing point is that consolidation should not be subdivision, considered subdivision. For some reason, when they did the new zoning law, they defined consolidation as subdivision. I don't know why.
I know laws can be changed, though.
Oh, absolutely.
I know that's, it was a good law, I know, but this is really, I mean, wasting your valuable time on this is just amazing to me.
I agree.
That somebody wants to add some land to what he already owns, has no plans to build on it, he said he wanted to ride his four-wheeler through there.
No. I'm not going to argue with you about that.
And that, I think it's just...
Is this something you would have to take in front of the, the, you get a variance on?
I've spoken, I spoke with John Lyons about this, because I'm confused by it. I don't understand it either, why you can't just do this, except that the way they did the new zoning law. And he said the thing to focus on is not the 75% dry, really the thing to focus on is buildability, for the planning board to pull them together. I don't know that without being, I can't stamp and sign the site plan for the consolidation, no, without the D O T, without, actually, I said, D E C, basically is primarily the one that's going to be involved here, and a letter from an engineer saying, yeah, you can get a septic on here, that's not going to, the health department will approve, that's not going to be within, you know, it's going to meet the separations from the wetlands and things like that. Other than that, I honestly don't know where to go with it.
Couple of...
But hopefully does.
No, I really don't. A little bit of a quandary, too. I look at it in the first instance and saying, okay, fine, we've got two unbuildable parcels, one of which seems to be occupied almost exclusively by wetland, the other one is occupied in part by wetland, but is unbuildable because it doesn't have any road frontage or easement access to it, apparently. So the first thing I, kind of reaction I have is, well, might it be better to have one unbuildable parcel than two through the consolidation? But then I take a look at what's being proposed here, and it seems to me that, as you say, Mr. Sarukas is the owner of the easterly parcel and wishes to acquire the westerly. And it appears, if you take a look at this, it appears that the justification, the reason for wanting to acquire the westerly is to gain some road frontage for what is currently the landlocked parcel. And that does raise the, that does raise the issues of whether or not access can be secured, despite the fact that there is frontage. On the other hand, here's the quandary. Cannot someone create a lot for nonbuildable purposes? If this were simply to be created as a lot, not for purposes of development, what is wrong with that?
I don't think anything's wrong with it. Does our zoning law let us do that?
So if that is Mr. Sarukas's intention, and would, he'd be willing to accept that as a, as notation on the, on the plat, I would think that would be an acceptable solution to what appears to be a dilemma in terms of...
That has been done before. I know when they did the subdivision up by the tennis club, there was one lot that was set aside, saying not to be developed, on the subdivision plat that was stamped and signed. It keeps getting lost, and so people keep buying it and then coming to, wanting to build on it.
Mr. Sarukas may be interested here in simply, you know, protecting his backside, because I trust this may adjoint his property, I don't know.
Yeah, I don't know either.
I don't know either, but...
I think that, I don't, I can represent him, but I can't speak his mind.
Yeah.
My original thought is that he, you know, if, there's a possibility that, that 13 point acres is buildable, and he would not want to ruin the value of that lot by saying he's never going to build on it, or some buyer in the future's never going to build on it.
Right, exactly. Unless you have a description.
But he has access to village water, and I believe on that 13 acres, there's room to put a septic system. That's going to be 100 foot away from any wetland.
Very likely.
And if we need to get an engineer in here to say that, in order to get this approved, we'll do it.
Yeah. We would need that letter. It doesn't have to, you know, engineer a whole plan, because it's more than five acres. We would need that letter.
That's something...
But I think the big stumbling block here...
Is that, is that wetland, all D E C wetland that...
No, part of it's N W I, and part of it was Hudsonia.
So something that just says it's feasible?
Well, either that, or a notation in another direction. Parcels consolidated not for purposes of development, potentially developable in, upon securing.
Yeah.
Whatever it is, whether it's a town wetlands permit, or a, or a town wetlands permit and a D E C permit.
They would have to do the same thing, only we don't have to deal with it right now, which is...
Right. Basically, what they would have to do is then get a building permit. They would have to go through the process with D E C and all of that stuff, to go to the building permit. And we could do that.
I think that would be acceptable.
Would he be able to...
Sure.
That language would be on it, and...
Yeah.
Yeah, I think, I think you have to, you know, I think you'd want to touch base with John Lyons in terms of working out the particulars of that, but it seems to be a reasonable solution, and it may be his intention to simply hold this as a conservation parcel.
Yeah, I know he has no intentions immediately to do anything with it, but he would not sign up to put a conservation, he could never make it develop.
Well, I think if we could, let me talk to John to make sure we can do this.
Okay.
With that provision, that we're creating a lot with a provision that, recognizing as it sits, it is not buildable, but if these different approvals were given, and we can list them, D E C and whatnot, Department of Health, that before building permit, say, could be issued, these would have to be secured.
And these would actually be notes placed on a draw.
Right. On whatever I stamp and sign. So what I think I'd like, I'd like to do is continue this public hearing to our next meeting, so I can talk to John, make sure that we can do it, and also that we have the proper language to do it, so it doesn't come back to give anyone grief later on.
Okay.
And hopefully then, we can do it, because, as I say, consolidation should not be subdivision. But the way they've defined it, it is, and so we're kind of stuck. But is that agreeable, the board, to continue this public hearing to our next meeting, which would be February, no, January?
6th. It's January 6th.
January 6th.
No.
At, it'd be our first one at, what would that be, 6:35?
Yep.
Okay. Could I hear a motion to do so?
Now, are we requesting that the applicant have a document that states it's, it potentially is buildable, i.e. Department of Health, or we're just...
Basically, what we're going to do, I'm going to talk to John about if the possibility is to get language saying that in merging these lots, we realize we are not creating a buildable lot. But, subject to the following approvals from D E C Health Department, it could be construed as buildable if these, if these approvals were, were secured by the applicant prior to getting a building permit.
And, and moving in that direction, what the board would actually do, presumably on the record and subject to John's advice, is waive the requirement for the establishment of buildability at this time.
Right.
Yeah. And then accept the note in lieu of...
Saying that, right. The buildability has to be demonstrated prior to the issuing of a building permit. Something along those lines.
And the bottom line is the matter would come back to the planning board at that point anyway, because if access were being punched through in any fashion from Old Post Road, it would be subject to a town wetlands permit.
Yeah.
Which is a planning board matter.
So I think that's where we stand, if everyone's amenable. Could I hear a motion to continue the public hearing to January 6th, at 6:35?
So be it.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Very good. Okay.
Thank you very much.
All right. Moving right along. Next item, Jonathan Mensch, Mensch Grassmere LLC, Mill Road and New York State Route 9 South, seeker compliance for Grassmere Farm Hotel Development. Planning board review of comments received from the public and agencies on the draft generic E I S and discussion establishment of parameters for next steps in the seeker compliance process in the matter with proposed Grassmere Hotel, a country inn in the rural agricultural RA 10 and Hudson River National Historic Landmark Districts and the town's local waterfront revitalization area being a type one action under seeker. Okay. I think, I didn't...
Probably my memo was probably the point of beginning.
We did have a meeting to go over with the applicant, the comments that had been received that they, that need to be responded to. I think the cutoff date was actually December 2nd, but we've continued to accept comments to allow people to, you know, get their, get their information and get their ideas. And I know the C A B, we now have the comments from the C A B on the D G E I S and the S U P, not the, not, not any site plan issues, which we have before us. Art, there have been a couple other things that have come in in the interim.
Yeah, three things have come in. Mr. Michael, I'm going to just try to summarize quickly, and the board can go into discussion of particular comments. I provided to the board a memo on December 9th, which summarized the discussion of the technical work session that was conducted on, I think it was the 4th of December, during which we reviewed all the comments that had been received at that particular date. And in my memo to the planning board, I pointed out the matter in which either we collectively agreed these comments should be addressed in a final generic E I S, or I added comments regarding procedural matters, like who's responsible technically for the F G E I S and things of that sort. Number one is, there were comments, substantial comments, substantive comments, made on the D G E I S. There's no question about the fact that the first thing the planning board should decide is that the preparation of a final generic environmental impact statement is required, and that the best manner in which a final generic environmental impact statement should portray the comments and the responses to the comments is really on a one-by-one basis. You basically pick off each of the comments that have been made, in some cases group those in terms of subject matter, as if, for instance, there may have been seven or eight comments that dealt specifically with the Mill Road entrances, for instance. But essentially, that there, each of the comments may be, be highlighted by, in terms of its, its content and who made the comment, and that there be a response to the, to the comment, in some cases involving a simple acknowledgement of the comment, and other cases involving the conduct of substantial amount of additional work. I'll just cite, as a, for instance, the Mill Road, the Mill Road issue. In that particular case, we know that, off the record, essentially, since the time of the comments, the applicant has advanced the possibility of a revised access configuration at Mill Road, being the one-way in. That technically would be an alternative that would be addressed through the final generic E I S, and would be an alternative that would be subject to, of evaluation based upon further work that would have to be conducted through that final, in advance of that final[1734.01] upon further work that would have to be conducted through that final, in advance of that final generic EIS, including more refinement of the plan for that modified entrance, or that alternative modified entrance, what implications that might have in terms of modifications that would occur elsewhere in the site plan. I know that the, the applicant, as a, for instance, said that the service entrance access area, parking area, et cetera, would have to be enhanced if that were to be an exit for the, for the guest, as for instance. So that would be part of an alternative plan that would, would be developed for the entrance, but it also has spinoff effect on other portions of the, of the site. The other thing that would, would clearly happen in light of any sort of a, a modified configuration, be it the entrance-only, or be it no entrance on Mill Road configuration, would be the matter of a revised traffic study to, to account for the revised arrival, departure, distribution of traffic that would occur with a modified, modified entrance arrangement. That's just to, to talk a little bit about, about traffic. The other thing that has pointed out in the, in the notes, in my notes or my memo, is that it was agreed that, as has been called for by, by a number of the commenters, and would have been called for by, by the board, there, there has to be a more detailed evaluation of the traffic study that was conducted, and that will be occurring through the Office of Morris Associates, in association with a traffic engineer, experienced traffic engineer that, who works with, with Morris. I think I, I think in my memo, I may have given that individual the wrong name. I think I said Mike Fitzpatrick. I believe it's Bill Fitzpatrick. Anyway, he's someone who works with Morris and is a, is a traffic engineer, a former DOT employer official, et cetera. All the work, the additional review of the, the traffic study, the potential modifications in, in access arrangements, the revised traffic study, would all be information that would be incorporated into the FG EIS. In other words, it would be part of the response to the comments that have been made, the issues presented. The one thing to, to realize about a, an FG EIS is, unlike a draft, which is the applicant's document, the FG EIS is the board's document, or the lead agency's document. You request and require, and require, request, et cetera, input from the applicant, but in terms of the evaluation of that input and the presentation of the FG EIS, that's the board's document, presumably a document that I would be involved in drafting for consideration by the, by the board. So that's how the, the matter of, of traffic would be addressed. Other comments that have been made about other issues would be addressed in similar fashion. We established that Morris Associates, either directly or through their affiliation with others, have the capacity to provide the essential input in, in both, under, with respect to both the traffic, and with respect to the noise, which are two of the, the technical issues. There are a whole series of other items. There were some requests for additional information, I believe, by, by DEC. That's going to be integrated, provided by the applicant, integrated in the FG EIS. There are also, in terms of traffic, there have been some issues raised about liability, town liability issues that seem to exist in the existing condition, as well as the potential future condition, with respect to, in the opinion of at least one or more writers, with respect to Mill Road, Mill Road. And it was agreed by all that the way for, to, to treat those issues in the first place, or those concerns in the first place, was to secure legal opinion from Planning Board Council, John Lyons. I believe the matter has been directed to John, John for consideration. And for John, upon conduct of his research, his analysis, et cetera, to discuss any issues that he believes are, are present, existing or future, with the agent jurisdiction, which in terms of Mill Road, is Town Highway Superintendent Kathy Consella. That's a, a general, a general framework. We know that there's been a give and take in recent days in terms of the CAB WAC's review of the coastal policies, request for, for fuller evaluation of coastal policies, or a more expansive consideration of coastal policies, and that will occur, that is the information that would be integrated in the, the FG EIS. And we know that in addition to the communications that were discussed on a point-by-point basis in the memo that I presented to the board on December ninth, there have been three additional communications, written communications, received since December ninth. The first being, I believe, on or, on or about that day, there was a letter received from Nancy Kelly, in her role as town historian, that will be considered in the FG EIS. There was an additional communication from Mr. Donaldson, I believe is Robert, Ronald?
Mm-hmm, Robert.
Robert Donaldson, who became aware of the sketch for the revised access configuration, and had some additional comments to make in light of that particular sketch. And I've already mentioned the fact of the give and take that's occurred between the applicant and the CAB WAC on, on coastal policies, that's resulted in some communications within the last three or four days. I believe that's essentially all that's been, been, been received. We left John Montane of GPI with the charge of actually going through the video, audio, audio/video transcript, if you will, of the public hearing, to actually pick out any additional comments, particular comments that were made at the public hearing that, again, need to be pulled out and responded to in the, in the FG EIS. What, what remains, I think, is for the board itself to identify any comments that individual board members may have on the DG EIS, that may not already be on the record from others, and to essentially charge the applicant for doing what, for the most part, Ray and, Ray and I, in the presence of, of John and, John Montane and Michael and Jonathan, at the technical work session, identified as the work that needs to charge, charge the applicant with doing that particular work, so that it can come back into the board and be evaluated for its sufficiency by, by Ray and myself, recommended to the board for integration in the FG EIS. I think that's a quick, a quick summary, not so quick, but that's a summary of where we stand in terms of what, what generally needs to be done. Every comment that's been made is going to be responded to. And ultimately, the board will, when it feels that the, the right information, the sufficient information is on the table, the board will have a FG EIS, which it will then put out for what, in the words of Seeker, is consideration. It's not another public hearing, there is no public hearing on the FG EIS. There's technically not a comment period, but during that period of consideration, people, anyone who's interested can submit comments, and ultimately, any comments offered will be considered in tandem with the FG EIS and the board's presentation of findings. There's a time, there's, there are time clocks associated with Seeker for, for doing these, these particular tasks, and assuming that there's reasonable due diligence practiced by the applicant in responding to the request essentially for additional information in order to address the comments, the board's under a, about a forty-five day time clock to issue an FG EIS, and upon accepting the FG EIS, under about a thirty-day time clock to issue findings.
Findings.
All of which, in this particular case, will happen prior to the reopening of the public hearing on this special use permit.
So basically, what we have to do tonight, as you know, the public hearing on Seeker is closed. December second was the last day we were accepting comment, but we did accept them up until today. So we've done that. So this is the opportunity for board members, if there's anything that you feel through this process has been neglected in terms of Seeker, to speak up now, so that we can do whatever we need to do to get any further information we might need, as Art says, so that we can ask the applicant if we need information from them, and then move forward with the FG EIS, and then findings after that. So, remember to the board, is there anything further that you feel has not been brought up, addressed, needs further, for the Seeker process?
I did not get Art's seven-page memorandum, so I haven't read it.
Okay. We'll make sure you get that.
I will.
It was a goodie. It was very well-written. Had a good flow. Anything else?
I guess I have one question. I, we have these deadlines, but we still accept. At what point do we say?
Tonight.
If we have a deadline, it's two weeks ahead of time, right?
I, I concur with you, Richard.
So, I mean, you know, a deadline is a deadline.
I concur completely.
You can't, I mean, we've done this a number of times with different projects, and all it does is just drag it out.
It doesn't, you're right.
If you're, if you're interested in making a comment, you got to show up, or you got to get the letter in on time, and that's it.
You're right, no, that's, you're absolutely right.
But.
And tonight is definitely the final.
Right, but anything received after that deadline, you know, certainly should be allowed, the public should be able to view it.
Mm-hmm.
But I don't think it should go into record.
Only to the extent that it might help the applicant to refine their project, to maybe answer some questions that really were out there.
For us to consider, yes.
Exactly.
It's good for us to know the neighbors.
But your point about deadlines is absolutely correct, and, no, you're absolutely correct. And tonight really is the dead, dead, deadline.
And there's not a, there aren't a tremendous number of comments, and the, the applicant expressed a willingness to consider. You know, the applicant could have said, no. And I, representing applicants, have frequently taken the position, deadline is the deadline. I'm not going to consider anything beyond that deadline. In this case, you know, I think, the only thing we're really dealing with, we're dealing with some, some complimentary, a complimentary memo from, from Mr. Donaldson, material from the CAC, and the Town Historian's letter.
Right.
Those are really the only things that came in, I believe, after the, maybe one of the others came in on December third, but by the time we got to reading through things on December fourth, it was on the table.
So that's where that is. But anything else that the town, that the planning board feels needs to be addressed in the final GEIS that isn't being addressed? Okay, so I guess what we want now is Jonathan's people to?
Yeah, what you'd like to do, Michael, is that we can make this, you should have on the record a motion requiring that a final generic environmental impact, stating that a final generic environmental impact statement is required for the project known as Grassmere Farm Hotel Development, and that the applicant is directed to cooperate with the planning board, with the lead agency, in the?
Drafting of?
In, in the preparation, in, in the preparation of the, that's, of the, of the FG EIS, as generally outlined in Planner's East Memo of December ninth.
Did you get that, Joni?
That, that's more than sufficient.
Could I hear a motion to approve that resolution?
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Very good, okay. Moving right along.
Any questions, Sha? Here. Yes.
Any trepidation or fear?
Always.
Oh, good. All right then. Moving right along. Thomas Thompson, Sally Mazarella, TTSM Park.
It's a public hearing?
No, the public hearing was closed.
This is the one that we did with the villages, it's just us discussing.
So the time doesn't matter?
No, no, the time doesn't matter. New York State Route Nine, Three-O-eight West, application for special use permits, site plan review and approval, and wetland permit, planning board discussion of additional information presented on November sixteenth, two thousand thirteen, in consideration of draft approval resolution for Phase One improvements to the extent within town, outside village area. And you have a draft of the approval resolution for the town portion of this project that Art provided us with. I understand the village has a approval resolution, draft approval resolution they're going to act on tomorrow night. So, I guess the only question I have, I know that Richard and Woody had some questions about funding.
Got that memo there?
And I believe that memo was sent out in terms of the new cost estimates and the reason for going from the eight inch down to the two-inch temporarily, the cost savings.
Did you get that, Woody?
Yeah, I got it.
Okay. You got it, Michael?
Yeah.
Okay.
We have those two items here. I'm not sure what else we had.
Stormwater.
So what I, oh, yes, stormwater, I believe. Well, errand, I know that's what we were waiting for, that's?
Yeah, stormwater.
We're prepared to submit that to them.
Okay, we have that, and it's going up to DEC.
DEC's the, the, the.
Yeah, that's.
Oh, nice color. That was the one thing we were waiting for. I don't know of anything else we were waiting for.
I have a couple of dates in the resolution, that's all. One relates to the stormwater report, one relates to the coastal's consistency review, and the other one relates to the date of the inter-ministerial agreement, but those are, you know, those are ministerial.
What I will do, as I will read the resolution, yes?
Michael?
Yes?
I have one thing, I have a letter, but you're going to get a formal letter, but this is an email.
Okay, oh, okay.
This is from Kevin Asher, the fire chief of Rhinebeck. It says, "Hi, Bob. After reviewing the commuter, computer models, it appears that all the roadways have sufficient turning and driving room for the fire department equipment. I see no reason why the project shouldn't proceed based on these models for a fire department standpoint. I think everything looks well-planned and thought of. I will provide you with a hard copy letter as soon as possible." So you will get a hard copy letter from him.
Very good, thank you. I will embark, I'm reading this. When I collapse, you'll take over? Okay. "The Town of Rhinebeck Planning Board hereby access follows on the below applications as determined applicable by the Town Zoning Enforcement Officer, by the Town of Rhinebeck Park Committee in the matter of refinement and advancement into the implementation phase of the master plan for the Thomas Thompson and Sally Mazarella Park, as adopted by the Town Board of the Town of Rhinebeck on June eighth, two thousand nine, said park located on the south side of Bryancliff Road, New York State Route Three-O-eight, within whole or part the Hudson River National Historic Landmark and Mid-Hudson Shorelands Districts, the Estates District Scenic Area of Statewide Significance, and the local Waterfront Revitalization Area, the Town Civic Zoning District within which the proposed use is a permissible use subject to special use permit and site plan approval, and adjacent to Dutchess County Certified Ag Cultural District Twenty, in New York State DEC Classified Protected Regulated Stream, the Landsman Kill, and New York State DEC ACOE Town Protected Regulated Wetlands. Applications under Town Code Chapter One-Two-Five Zoning Law for special use permit pursuant to the specific requirements of Article Three, Section One-Two-Five-Dash-Two-O, District Schedule of Use Regulations for Establishment of a not-for-profit, non-commercial outdoor recreation facility, lying in part within the Civic Zoning District of the Town Outside Village Area of the Town of Rhinebeck. Application under Town Code Chapter One-Two-Five Zoning for site plan approval pursuant to the specific requirements of Article Three, Section One-Twenty-Five-Dash-Twenty, District Schedule of Use Regulations, and the associated procedures and standards set forth in Article Seven Site Plan Review and Approval for both those Phase One improvements lying wholly within the Town Outside Village Area of the Town of Rhinebeck, and those portions of Phase One improvements lying in part within the Town Outside Village Area, and in part within the Incorporated Village of Rhinebeck. Application under Town Code Chapter One-Twenty Freshwater Wetlands Law pursuant to the specific requirements of Section One-Twenty-Dash-Five Regulated Areas and Section One-Twenty-Dash-Six Controlled Acts, and the associated procedures and standards for wetlands permits set forth in Section Two-Ten-Dash-Nine Procedures for Permits."
One, one, one twenty, hold it. It's got to be one twenty, it can't be two-ten.
Oh, yeah, it's one twenty.
Both, both of those next two are one-twenty.
Yep, one-twenty, dash-nine Procedures for Permits in Section One-Twenty-Dash-Ten Standards for Wetland Permit Decision. Let me hurry up right over there. For both those Phase One improvements lying wholly within the Town Outside Village Area of the Town of Rhinebeck, and those portions of Phase One improvements lying in part within the Town Outside Village Area, and in part within the Incorporated Village of Rhinebeck. To the extent not considered fully incorporated by express language of the Town Zoning Law within the above cited applications for site plan approval and/or wetland permit, application under Town Code Chapter One-Two-Five Zoning Law for special use permits pursuant to the specific requirements of Article Five Supplementary Regulations, Section One-Two-Five-Dash-Twenty, Development near Streams, Rivers, Wetlands, and Other Water Bodies, Section One-Two-Five-Dash-Four-One, Development in the Flood Fringe Overlay, FFO District, including consideration of the complementary requirements set forth within Town Code Chapter Seventy-three Flood Damage Prevention Law, and Section One-Two-Five-Dash-Five-Four, Development in the Water Resource Protection Overlay District, and the associated procedures and standards set forth for all special use permits within Article Six Special Use Permit Requirements for both those Phase One improvements lying wholly within the Town Outside Village Area of the Town of Rhinebeck, and those portions of Phase One improvements lying in part within the Town Outside Village Area, and in part within the Incorporated Village of Rhinebeck. For purposes of this resolution, the above applications are considered to be set forth within the below documents, each prepared either directly by or in consultation with the Town Park Committee. Application forms for site plan review and approval, special use permits and wetland permit, each as executed by Robert Ellsworth, Chairman of the Town Park Committee, dated September fourth, two thousand twelve, and is then accepted for purposes of initiating planning board and public review within a procedural resolution unanimously adopted by the planning board upon mutual agreement of the planning board and the Town Park Committee." upon mutual agreement of the planning board and the Town Park Committee. That additional documentation, including but not necessarily limited to proposed building elevations, a traffic study, a fiscal analysis, a stormwater management plan, flood hazard boundary information, and an off-site improvements plan involving modification in site access, circulation, and parking arrangements on the adjacent Star Library site remain to be submitted as integral parts of the above applications. The 33 sheet set of site plan drawings entitled Thomas Thompson Sally Mazzarella Park prepared by Weston and Sampson, P.E., S.A.L.A.P.C., the project engineer retained by the Town Board of the Town of Rhinebeck, and dated August 2012 and revised to May 2013 in partial fulfillment of the above stated requirement for additional documentation, including matters of flood hazard boundary and off-site improvements. A full environmental assessment form, Part 1 with attachments including site resource analysis, habitat assessment verified by Aaron Pathick, project engineer Weston and Sampson, and dated September 4, 2012. A coastal assessment form executed by Sharon Sherad, planning board liaison to the Town Park Committee, and dated July 20, 2012. An agricultural data statement executed by Sharon Sherad, planning board liaison to the Town Park Committee, and dated July 20, 2012. Additional documentation required by the planning board and prepared at the request of the Town Park Committee by parties other than the project engineer. Letter report, Thompson Mazzarella Park Expansion Revised Fiscal Analysis Prepared by Green Plant Inc. and dated May 20, 2013, superseding prior issue of December 17, 2012. Letter report, Assessment Report, Access to Thomas Thompson Mazzarella Park Prepared by William D. Fitzpatrick, P.E., dated December 12, 2012, and amended on December 15, 2012. A seven-sheet set of architectural plans, Pavilion for the Thomas Thompson and Sally Mazzarella Community Park Prepared by Frank Mazzarella, R.A., and dated May 2013. Progress report, Biodiversity Assessment of the Thompson Mazzarella Park Prepared by Hudsonia Limited, dated May 20, 2013, and superseding interim report dated September 2013.
2012.
December 12. Yes, I caught that one. All right. A second 33 sheet set of site plan drawings and set entitled Thomas Thompson Sally Mazzarella Park Phase One Prepared by Weston and Sampson, P.E.S.A.L.A.P.C., the project engineer retained by the Town Board of the Town of Rhinebeck and dated November 18, 2013, including therein at Sheet C4 Phase One Work Scope, a list of Phase One construction components and annotation as to their jurisdictional location, i.e. wholly within the town outside village area of the Town of Rhinebeck and within the incorporated village of Rhinebeck, or partially in both the town outside village area and the village. Complementing the above set of site plan drawings dated November 18, 2013, a stormwater report entitled...
Whatever.
Whatever. But I'm sure it's got a better name than that.
Aaron's got it over there, I guess.
Prepared by Weston and Sampson, P.E.S.A.L.A.P.C., the project engineer retained by the Town Board of the Town of Rhinebeck and dated...
December 16.
Okay. December 16, 2013. This item completing the requirements for additional information set forth by the planning board on September 4, 2012. Like Warren Keith. The above applications are also governed by the terms of an intermunicipal agreement entered into by the Town Board of the Town of Rhinebeck and the Village Board of the Village of Rhinebeck, and I actually have to get the specific date, and by the annexed amended negative declaration, determination of nonsignificance issued by the Town Board of the Town of Rhinebeck as duly designated secret lead agency on October 21, 2013. Through its issuance of the amended negative declaration concluded its evaluation that certain changes and modifications made to the Thomas Thompson Sally Mazzarella Park master plan since the time of the original negative declaration was issued on June 8, 2009, specifically being the substitution of the now proposed installation of onsite subsurface sanitary sewage facilities instead of the previously proposed connection to municipal sewage facilities did not cause any potential adverse environmental impacts. As provided for in the intermunicipal agreement, a duly noticed public hearing on the above applications was conducted by the Town Planning Board in joint session with the Village Planning Board. Said public hearing opened on September 17, 2013 and closed on October 19, 2013. This public hearing superseding a public hearings severally conducted by the Town Planning Board on December 17, 2012. The applications are also referred to the Town Waterfront Advisory Committee pursuant to Town Code Chapter 118, the Town Conservation Advisory Board pursuant to Town Code Chapter 125 zoning, and the Dutchess County Department of Planning and Development pursuant to Section 239 of the New York State General Municipal Law. Dutchess County Department of Planning and Development advised consideration of the applications pertaining to the Thompson Mazzarella Park was a matter of local concern with no adverse effect on county plans or policies. A planning board field visit to the site, project site with the Town Park Committee and its project engineer was made on Saturday, September 15, 2012, with members of the Town Conservation Advisory Board, the Town Waterfront Advisory Committee, the Village Planning Board, the Star Memorial Library Board, and the public invited to join in the visit. In consideration of the Town of Rhinebeck local waterfront revitalization program, the Town Planning Board concurs with the observations of the Town's Waterfront Advisory Committee as set forth in its report of, and we have it right here somewhere, December 16.
Yes.
December 16, 2013, and issues a statement of consistency finding both the overall development of the Thomas Thompson Sally Mazzarella Park and the proposed Phase One improvements thereof as depicted and/or otherwise described in the above cited documentation to be consistent with and in no way contravening of pertinent coastal policies as set forth in the LWRP. Two, in consideration of the application for special use permit under Town Code Chapter 125 zoning to authorize establishment of a not-for-profit, non-commercial outdoor recreation facility, the Town Planning Board, A, determines the proposed use in no way contravenes any of the general standards for all special use permits set forth in Section 125-67; B, further determines the proposed use to be in conformance with the specific standards for not-for-profit, non-commercial outdoor recreation facility as set forth in Section 125-68; P, grants the special use permit pursuant to Chapter 125 of the Town Code and subject to the following prerequisite condition, securing of site plan approval for the development of proposed Phase One improvements. In consideration of the application for site plan review and approval under Town Code Chapter 125 zoning for undertaking of the proposed Phase One improvements within the town outside village area as listed on Sheet C4 Phase One Scope of Work and otherwise depicted and/or described within the above cited documentation, the Town Planning Board approves the application for site plan approval and authorizes the chairman to stamp and sign the site plan upon the applicant's satisfaction of each of the below conditions and/or requirements within six calendar months of the adoption of this resolution. A, securing of wetlands permit from the Town of Rhinebeck Planning Board for those improvements located within a regulated area as defined within Town Code Chapter 120 Freshwater Wetlands, Section 120-5; B, securing of design approval from the Dutchess County Health Department for the proposed onsite sanitary sewage facilities; C, securing of approval for a public water supply from the New York State Department of Health as may be required in the matter of proposed municipal water supply arrangements; D, securing of a speedies permit from the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation; E, modification of the heretofore submitted site plan drawings to address any requirements set forth by the Dutchess County Health Department or the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation during their review; F, signing of the site plan drawings and the related architectural plans by the responsible New York State licensed professionals; G, securing of complimentary site plan approval for Phase One improvements within the Incorporated Village of Rhinebeck by the Village Planning Board and, while so doing, encompassing such considerations as New York State DOT Highway Work Permit requirements, Village Water Department requirements, and Library Board authorization for intended off-site improvements modifying existing access, circulation, and parking arrangements at the Star Library. Four, in consideration of the application for wetlands permit under Town Code Chapter 120 Wetlands to authorize work limited to development of portions of the grass surface trails within the town regulated wetland buffer, the Town Planning Board, A, determines that the work proposed will be of no substantial effect on the protected wetlands in consideration of the standards set forth in Town Code Chapter 120, Section 120-10; B, grants without condition and/or other requirements the requested wetland permit pursuant to Chapter 120 of the Town Code; C, advises the zoning enforcement officer the planning board has considered that a portion of the grass surface trails will be developed and maintained within a FEMA-designated 100-year floodplain and determined the development and maintenance of this portion of the trail, which includes the installation of no structures, will have no effect on either the floodplain designation and the elevation of floodwaters within the floodplain. Five, to the extent not considered fully incorporated by express language of the town zoning law within the above cited application for site plan approval and/or wetlands permit, in consideration of the application under Town Code Chapter 125 zoning law for special use permits pursuant to the specific requirement of Article 5 Supplementary Regulations, Section 120-40 Development Near Streams, Rivers, Wetlands and Other Water Bodies, Section 125-41 Development Within the Flood Fringe Overlay District, including consideration of the complementary requirements set forth within Town Code Chapter 73 Flood Damage Prevention Law and Section 125-54 Development Within Town Water Resources Protection Overlay District, the Town Planning Board determines both the associated procedures have been met and the proposed work is in conformance with the general standard set forth for all special permit uses within Section, within Article 6 Special Use Permit Requirements. D, determines the proposed work is in conformance with the pertinent specific standards for each of the subject's special use permits as set forth within Town Code Chapter 125 zoning, Section 125-40, 125-41, and 125-54. C, grants the special use permits pursuant to Chapter 125 of the Town Code and subject to the following prerequisite condition, securing of site plan approval for the proposed development of Phase One improvements. In taking this action, the planning board authorizes the town zoning enforcement officer to issue a certificate of occupancy of the not-for-profit, non-commercial outdoor recreation facility and the proposed Phase One improvements therein upon the completion of all work set forth in the Phase One site plan, including those components within the purview of either the Dutchess County Health Department and/or the New York State Department of Health or the Village of Rhinebeck and the satisfaction of all other codes, laws, rules, or regulations within the purview of the ZEO and/or building inspector, including but not limited to the requirements of the New York State Uniform Building, Construction, and Fire Prevention Code. The planning board further advises either modification in the proposed Phase One improvements or any consideration of additional improvements within the Thomas Thompson Sally Mazzarella Park as may affect lands within the town outside village area will require in the first instance submission of an application for site plan amendment and in the latter at a minimum an application for site plan review and approval. Could I hear a motion to approve?
So moved.
A second. Discussion.
If you truly speak on our...
Melody, take it.
I have a comment.
Okay.
I'm not gonna be voting a for this. I don't think there's any surprise. And I just wanna give my reasons, I don't need to discuss them because I know it won't make any difference. I know that it's gonna pass tonight, even though apparently we haven't received the engineering calculations, so we don't have a final submission, even though I personally asked for them last time and said we'd get them. We did get a budget today, which changed by $140,000 just on the pavilion, but there's something else there that says engineering and contingency, $108,000. I could guarantee the engineer did not get paid $108,000. So I don't need anyone to break it down. I just see overall, I don't see any of the hours and hours of public opinion in a petition incorporated into anything on the plan. Not one person who spoke, not one change was incorporated, and it all had to do with active recreation. Not one thing changed. This is a multi-million dollar project we're talking about. This is Phase One, yes, there's more to come, heard that many times, but this is the rec part. Primary use in the conservation easement was for active and passive, active being the primary. Number two, there's no bond put on this in the beginning because it's the town, and there's no need to put that kind of expense on the town itself to establish a bond, but we do wanna make sure it gets finished, and finished in an organized way, and I think as taxpayers, we all wanna make sure that there's a good plan in place. There's been no engineering review, even though the town subjects itself to the same rules as it does every single person, like Grassmere, who's, we're gonna have more traffic studies and more engineering and more conservation thing. There's no review at all for this, but it's a multi-million taxpayer-funded. Don't mistake a grant with free money. A grant is taxpayer money. There's been no interpretation of the block grant. I asked numerous times to say, "Do we or do we not have to put the concession stand in Phase One for the handicap accessible bathrooms?" Those three things, handicap accessible bathrooms, men's, women's, and a concession stand. My recollection is, that's what was necessary to get the... It would be a shame if we don't have a block grant, that extra $100,000, because we don't have the money to put the concession stand, but I didn't get an answer for that. There has been no budget. There still is no budget. Like I said, I only received this today and the numbers are vastly different, so there's no budget. So, I'm still amazed, I guess, that this whole project just gets rubber stamped. The village approved it. Apparently, they're not concerned with reviewing the engineering or any of the stormwater management or anything. But one of the, one of the most difficult things I have to accept is that I've been made to look like some terrible, terrible person all along and not, short of a couple questions by Woody and a few, everyone else, village board and town board members have sat there tight-lipped and not asked any questions over a multi-million dollar project going in the back room. That's all I have to say.
Anyone else? Hearing none, I will poll the board. Woody?
Aye.
Sharon?
Aye.
Richard, you're voting present or abstained?
Nay.
Nay?
Aye.
Jesse?
Aye.
Melody?
Aye.
And I vote aye.
Who was the motion in second, huh, man?
I motioned.
Sharon, and the second was Melody. So, good luck.
Thank you, thank you very much.
And I believe the village is voting tomorrow night on their approval resolution.
This resolution takes into, mentions certain things that the village better be taking into account. DOT access, the water connection, et cetera, et cetera. Because there, again, this resolution deals only with, I say, less than 50% of the improvements, Phase One improvements that are within the purview of the, this planning board. A good deal of the projects within the purview of the village planning board, and there are associated external permit requirements that affect that portion of the project, the library board, the DOT, the water department, et cetera. So just remember, it's, none of that's approved here.
So, good luck.
Thank you very much.
The next item on the agenda, Hudson Valley Rhinebeck LLC, Ackertook Road Sketch Plan Conference continuation from November 18, 2013, of planning board consideration of sketch plan submission under Town Code Chapter 125 zoning. On behalf of CB Developers for Post-Rockledge Development, consisting of a country-in-one and a 49-unit residential development situated within a 139-acre parcel, former daytop property, encompassing the Star Miller Manor House and other existing structures and infrastructure and fronting on Ackertook and Primrose Hill roads in the rural countryside RC5 district. Who do we have here tonight presenting anything further?
I don't see any representative.
Well, they did indicate when we were on-site a week or so ago that they didn't expect to be presenting anything for the next several months.
Right, right.
That's my understanding of where they are.
And this item was only on the agenda if there were comments that the board wanted to, wanted to essentially present to them either directly tonight or communicate.
And I don't know that, I know Woody and Melody both went on the site visit.
And Bob.
And Bob, who's...
Not here.
Not here tonight. I don't know if there was anything that you, perhaps you conveyed any thoughts to them during the visit?
No, no, I try to never pass on thoughts because it's not appropriate.
Precisely.
Anything that you...
Field visits are for purposes of observation only.
And what did you observe?
Yeah, that's...
I wouldn't know that, actually.
Oh, yeah, I wouldn't, I wouldn't know. It's nice and warm. But, is there anything that you wish to send, that we should be sending on to the developer, things that you feel, as you saw, that you wanna make, that you thought maybe at this point would be a preliminary thing, primary thing they should be looking at that maybe they haven't? Art and I went out there during a break in a meeting we had on Wednesday and bumped into Mark Reminski and sort of just toured and went around and looked at it. I was very impressed with what exists there and the potential of the property. I think that basically they're still in a very preliminary sketch plan frame of mind, so personally, I don't know what I would suggest to them except, you know, you have a good opportunity here. But I think that, you know, the details, and I think they're the first to admit it, are certainly not forthcoming anytime really soon.
And the, the new seeker, full EAF, certainly provides, not that they, not that they specifically need it, but it provides a lot of guidance as to what information has to be developed. There's no question about that. It's much more specific than it had been in the past. Essentially, they're going to be developing a whole group of upfront studies or identifying the need to conduct upfront studies that are really little different than, than those that have been conducted on behalf of the, you know, for the Grassmere development. The only thing that they have going for them that's different is they've got much more in-place infrastructure.
Yeah, I mean, I think it became aware in, in walking around, you know, that they appear to be, going to be making good use of the original carriage roads for the, you know, location of their units. They're gonna have some traffic implications that they're gonna need to look at seriously. And I don't know yet whether they, what they're gonna do with the access that they can have from Primrose, that's another, another access point that probably they need to look at pretty carefully.
In, just in brief conversation with, with Mark, they recognize that the principal access point... point on Ackert, will not be where it is currently in order to achieve suitable site distance, but they have a situation that looks like it is desirable. Obviously, traffic is going to be a, traffic impact is going to be a concern, I would trust, within the, within the neighborhood in that there will be additional traffic on Ackert Hook and the surrounding roadway network. Not to, not to evaluate whether or not it's manageable, but there will be additional traffic. And because they are a residential development in part, we'll be seeing here, I believe, the first application of the town's affordable housing standards also to the extent that those, those get in place as well as resolution of the green building.
It's a very, as you know, it's a very wooded lot. Jeff was having a site visit with us. And, you know, we'd like to see that maintained, certainly in terms of the footprints of the buildings. I think they're aware of that. I think that's the direction they're going in, but certainly something we talked about as being desirable. They did not, they expressed at the end of our walkthrough that they didn't expect, Mark didn't expect to be back much before the spring with this, that they have so much work to do.
It's realistic.
Yeah, they have a lot of work to do and the, when Michael and I dropped out on the site, and that was, I guess, on the fourth, Mark was out there, actually not conducting engineering investigation, he was out there with Joe Bridges doing wetlands work.
Right.
And that was just simply preliminary work. And as Joe pointed out, with the investigations they were doing right now, we were kind of off-season from when they really need to be conducted with respect to the hydrological aspects, et cetera. So it's all, it all plays into that.
I have, I'm sorry, I thought you were done. Go ahead. I have a concern, not a concern, but I want to voice an opinion. The project on its own merit looks good. The problem that I perceive happening, and I think the applicant ought to be aware of it, and I think that the town of Rhinebeck ought to be aware of it, is the economic sustainability of that project. He's got a major project going in with X number of hotel rooms. There's a new, there's a project proposed for the village of Rhinebeck which is Y number of hotel rooms. This gentleman is applying for Z number of hotel rooms and lodging facilities, whatever that shape takes to play. And I think for his protection and for the town, I think an economic sustainability study has to be taken. Because what happens when he does, when he goes, it doesn't work out for him? Okay? It's for his protection?
Good point.
And I think it's frankly for the town's protection.
It's a good point.
We're going to, if we're going to do that, though, don't you have to impose that same thing on everyone who's doing the same? I mean.
That's a good point.
There's, one of the advisors I happen to know, because I've seen, does these very large-scale New York City developments, millions of dollars. You've got a team on there that, I think the fact that they're not coming back for months means they're just going to stop and they're going to look, they're going to watch what's going on.
Oh, no.
I don't see why we would, I mean, they're going to build these and they're going to sell them like any other project, probably in some kind of a systematic fashion so that they're not sitting on 30 houses.
I'm not talking housing, I'm talking about hotel.
Hotel.
Space.
Right, but the hotel, my impression is the hotel is going to be, I didn't get to go on the site.
Well, it's one of three that I'm aware of at this moment.
Right.
That are in various forms of planning. And I think it's in the applicant's best interest. He may not know about the one in the village, he may not know about his.
Well, he knows Jonathan's.
I don't know, I don't know this.
Yeah, no, the one team player is straight down Rhinebeck. Fox.
And I know Charlie knows about Jonathan's because he came to Jonathan's public meeting. So I know he knows about that.
But you're right. I mean, that hotel is their centerpiece. They want that to be the focal point coming into the estates, which is.
I don't, my impression was not that the inn part of this project is what's driving the project.
No.
The inn is, in my opinion, secondary in terms of their overall desires to the, to the lodging.
I'm not challenging the application.
No, no, no.
But I'm saying is I think it's in everyone's best interest that that be looked at in detail.
I think it lends itself, when you look at the layout of where he is citing these various attached units, in my opinion, it lends itself to phasing. Whether he chooses to do that in that manner is up to him, but, you know, they're in these three very distinct locations that you could actually build out in phases. And that's up to him to decide.
Will you go in, is it, is it as he described it, as you're driving in to go to your house? You can look up and see the?
Oh, yeah. As it currently is, and I think when they redo the entrance, you'll still, still have that. It's going to change where it hit Ackertook Road, but there's this LA of trees. I mean, you can tell this was a very well-maintained estate at one time.
And what, how long has this not been used?
Not that long.
Only a couple of years.
Only a couple of years.
So, it's in good shape.
I guess I'm trying to understand, there were, my impression was this was, there were a lot of people that worked there.
Daytop.
Right.
Yeah.
So why does anyone feel we'll have a traffic concern when we had hundreds of cars coming and going every day?
Well, that's, that's something to be really looked at. What was the traffic use back then and what's the proposed use now?
From a traffic analysis standpoint, prior, prior use is not a relevant measure. You don't compare with what the prior use had been. It's essentially the impact of what's proposed at this point in time.
But the only way prior use would be of value, I would think, would you see, okay, how did that impact Ackertook Road at that time at a certain level?
Precisely.
Right, but, you know, I guess my, I'm saying, you know, like, there's a couple of people here who said, oh, we don't want traffic on our road and everything, which I understand. I don't want it either. My road's a shortcut in Rhinebeck and people speed by my house. But at the same time, this area has had traffic for many, many years. So to have someone say, well, you're going to destroy the whole integrity, it's a consideration for us to say, well, we've always had traffic there.
That's what the traffic study will hopefully determine, lay a baseline, hopefully. My understanding from what he was thinking in terms of the manor house or the inn and everything was primarily servicing the people coming up on weekends who maybe got up late, wanted to get a meal, maybe didn't go to their house, wanted to have a bedroom, but open to the public too for functions too if they have the rooms. But the main thinking was basically, I think, as Melody was saying, residential is primarily what he's looking at here, and the other facilities are first foremost to serve the residents there, but secondly, open to the public as space permits, things like that.
Yeah.
Whereas Jonathan's is, you know, strictly visitor, guest, and then go home.
CB's, CB's, CB's inn.
You don't have a prejudiced view on that, do you? No, I didn't think so.
I don't remember because I wasn't.
Woody, do you remember what he talked about in terms of square footage for each of the units?
No.
Five to seven, sorry, it was five to 7,000 square feet.
That's what I thought.
Yeah, they hadn't really settled on what.
Per unit.
That's a lot of elbow room.
There were three clusters of three, I think 17 clusters of three units.
Yeah.
And they were somewhere between 5,000 and 7,000 square feet.
For, for the cluster, not for, not for the individual. Individual units average about 2,000.
Okay.
They're about 2,000 and.
And I would also.
I think it's, it's 14 threes and two fours or a four and a two. It's 16 or 17 different pods, but those pods in total are between 5,000 and 7,000 square feet, making the units averaging about 2,000. The, the country inn is described to me, and I'm not sure if it was Mr. Blatchman's words, maybe it was Mark Rudikoff's, Matt Rudikoff's, was essentially, was an expansive community building that also happened to house some, some additional guest accommodations as well as a restaurant that would be open to the public. But it's not, it's not the, it's not the.
I think so, but I don't remember what it was. Yes, it's not big, but.
It's a big house, but it's not, it's not hotel.
So it would be used as, as a clubhouse kind of a thing?
Well, it's a public restaurant also, but, you know, it is the, it is that focal point where the people in the development can get to come together too.
And it's also worth noting that in our zoning law, since it's multifamily housing, our zoning law says that doubt shall, for every six units, one unit will be affordable. And they are aware of that, and they're really trying to work that into this as well, so.
For every how many units?
For every six units, one must be affordable.
Wow.
So that could be eight units, affordable units.
Six caretaker units.
Well, Woody had a good point earlier. I mean, if all these three projects were to come online at the same time, that's approximately 175 hotel rooms in Rhinebeck. So I think an economic study makes sense. I mean, I don't know how to put it out to each.
It's the sort of thing, well, you can't really, I think it's the sort of thing that each applicant in their own, their own way, I think they do a study of viability of a project, marketability. I would imagine any sort of investment of that sort, you would do that. That doesn't mean Macy's shares with Gimbel's, but.
This represents a lot of research and time and study right here.
Yeah, absolutely.
These guys, these guys aren't messing around.
No. It's, it's a top-notch group, and I.
Well, and he has gone ahead with the purchase.
Yeah.
So he's, he's not just holding an option anymore.
Well, it's an option to build, he can sell it.
Sure.
He can sell it at any one.
But it wasn't contingent upon.
No, I think they're very excited about it. And we had someone from Dutchess County Business here. Get up and speak, and she said she has people calling and people are looking for, and they're staying one way down Fishkill, Wapins, and they're doing things up here.
Yeah, the northern, northern portion of the county is desperate for hotels.
I got married here 10 years ago. I couldn't get a room, I couldn't book rooms at the Beakman Arms because the antique show was in town or whatever, oh, Bard, it was Bard Graduation, everything, and they said, no, take a hike. These people sign up months and months ahead of time, there's no room in the inn.
This is the smallest of the three. I think it's only 12 rooms.
It's, it's country inn one, yes. It's, it is the smallest. So, but we will see, but I guess we'll have a motion to keep them, do we keep them off the agenda until they come back with an application?
Yeah, yeah, until they come back.
Okay?
That's what they're expecting.
No request beyond the agenda?
Right.
Will we even mention it again?
Right, two weeks ahead of whatever date they want to be on, they should have the application and all that stuff ready for us.
They intend to come in with a, with an application and with a full environmental assessment form and whatever supporting studies they, they choose to attach to that environmental assessment form. And they'll be requesting at that point in time that this board initiate the secret compliance process by declaring intent to serve as lead agency. So we'll, we'll be into that, communicating with all the other permitting agencies and first presumably getting the planning board's designation as lead agency and.
I hope not.
And that's, you know, it's, it's their, it's their clock as to when they, when they, when they come back. And they seem to have indicated quite clearly that they intend to do a lot of homework onsite prior to, prior to coming back.
Now, they, I think.
And they've got a good team together to do it.
Yeah, as Richard has said, I think they know what they're doing and they, they're not, they're not cutting corners.
Yeah, they're not, they're not amateurs in this business. I've done some research on both organizations in there.
They, they know where they're going with it.
They're acting other.
And their entire team, at least part of the week, is literally within 20 or 30 miles away.
Right. They're primary people.
It's Red Hook, Rhinebeck, Woodstock, et cetera.
Yeah.
It's not, you know, it's not an out of.
It's not Miami.
No, it's not Miami, it's not Texas, it's not California.
All right then. Moving right along, the next thing on our agenda is the town board referred the zoning petition for John McGuire to us, and Art has prepared the report.
As requested.
As requested.
She didn't think he'd be on until he was back.
Oh.
He's coming back.
Oh, he's coming back? Oh, we want to, we could.
He's at the fire department, right?
Oh, we could, we could, we can hold that until John gets back, that's all right. We can go to these others. ZBA referrals, Sung A Lee area variance, requested reduction and required side setback from 50 feet to 10 feet per addition to single-family dwelling in the rural countryside I'm not aware of any issue with that myself. I don't know if anyone has any problem with that. I know Art has a resolution here.
Which one are we talking about?
Sung A Lee.
It's the one on 308. It's, basically, it's one that, there are two lots next to each other, and this butts up against, he's buying the other lot and he's going to combine them, but he wanted to put this little addition on for a bathroom before he went through the whole ZBA process. That's why he went for the, that's why he's going for this variance.
He goes for subdivision?
Yeah, exactly. Exactly, no, exactly. Yeah.
Specifically, is this on 308?
It's, oh, I'm trying to remember because.
It's George Rankle.
Woody, I don't, I don't know, and.
Well.
I don't have a site.
I'll look it up tomorrow.
I don't have a site, area site thing here to say.
Not a problem.
But I discussed it with him, I discussed it with someone else, his plans. He wants to put a swimming pool in and he needs the other yard to do that anyway. So that's what the, that's what he's proposing to do, and that's what the variance is. I didn't see any problem with it as he was proposing to move forward, so.
The, the draft resolution deals only with, deals specifically with what the planning board is supposed to be considering, whether there are any planning, zoning, or environmental issues associated. And the only other thing in the, and it does point out that you understand that he's doing this because, in lieu of proceeding with consolidation, he thinks this is a quicker approach, ultimately wants to consolidate. On the other hand, there is a comment in here that the ZBA simply needs to carefully consider the extent of the variance involved. And just reminding the board, reminding the ZBA that, you know, 80% variance is a substantial variance.
Not if you've done 150%.
Well, anyway, so that's, that's what, that's what the draft resolution basically deals with.
Okay. So if you have no questions, I'll read this and then you might have some questions. Okay. The town of Rhinebeck Planning Board has reviewed upon referral the application for area variance submitted by Sung A Lee, ZBA case 848, and finds the requested variance to authorize reduced side setback to raise no significant planning, zoning, environmental issues in the context of the existing pattern of residential development in the RC five district. The planning board understands there to be the presence of practical difficulty cited in the application and recommends the ZBA rely upon its own study of the facts and decide this application in accordance with the criteria and procedures set forth at Town Code Chapter 125, Sections 125 dash 124 C and D. Were it not for the combined circumstances of the location of the existing structure and the reputed interest of the applicant as cited by the ZEO and ultimately consolidating the existing house lot with a parcel of budding the area of reduced setback which he also owns, the planning board would be recommending due to the substantial magnitude of the requested variance being a reduction of 80% in the otherwise required setback, the ZBA carefully consider in its deliberations whether the requested variance is the minimum variance necessary to achieve the applicant's objective. Could I hear a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. The next one, John's not here yet. Perry and Marcus de Grazia, 15 Old Farm Road area variance case 849. This application is for a requested reduction required front setback from 100 feet to 89 feet for purposes of authorizing construction of a detached garage accessory to a single-family dwelling in the rural countryside RC five district. Upon exemption of this application, I offer the below draft resolution for consideration. Once again, it's another one that, part of what we're seeing here is we're in RC five, we were in RC three when most of these structures, homes, original buildings and things like that were built. So this is somewhat symptomatic of the upzoning that most of the houses, those of us in the RC five district now live in, are non-conforming. So to do anything, we need an area variance, a setback variance. So having said that, I will read the draft resolution. The town of Rhinebeck Planning Board has reviewed upon referral the application for area variance submitted by Perry and Marcus de Grazia, ZBA case 849, and finds the requested variance to authorize reduced front setback to raise no significant planning, environmental issues in the context of the existing pattern of residential development in the RC five district. The planning board observes the request to be reasonably small in magnitude being an 11% reduction in the otherwise required setback, and understands there to be the presence of practical difficulty cited in the application and recommends the ZBA rely upon its own study of the facts and decide this application in accordance with the criteria and procedures set forth at Town Code Chapter 125, Section 125, 124 C and D. Could I hear a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and John's still not here. Okay. And John's still not here. All right. Last but not least. Come in, John. Don't wait. Uh-oh. Hope it wasn't something I said. The next variance, I think we're going to have a little discussion about. Next recommendation.
Bittersweet?
No, Darren Page.
Well, I know that, but what about bittersweet?
Where did John go?
He stopped in Hall talking on the phone.
Oh. Well.
He's probably not interested. Those just people.
We'll discuss bittersweet now then.
It's too bittersweet.
We had to go to bathroom.
This agenda item involves the ZEO's referral under Town Code, Chapter 125 zoning, Section 125 66I L4, I think that is, of a notice of violation issued on November 4th, 2013. The planning board should discuss with continuing guidance from the planning board attorney how it wishes to proceed in this matter, including, as may be the case, identifying and required background information to be retrieved from the planning board's archives or additional information required from the ZEO. What basically happened is in the site plan approval for the bittersweet bed and breakfast, there's one designated parking area with, I think, two cars permitted in that. And on numerous occasions, the CEO, and I believe the ZEO as well as neighbors, have seen more cars parked there and scattered about the property. There is a provision in the town zoning law that a violation can be referred to the planning board for us to have a public hearing to revoke a special use permit. My understanding that is in this case, this particular violation, I did not see that it was, it was made to the owner of the premise, of that place, that, that there was proper service of this violation, therefore giving the opportunity for the person to remediate the problem. So my feeling was, I certainly don't feel comfortable, you know, holding a public hearing and revoking a special permit if the person doesn't know, has not been informed that this indeed is a violation that they need to look into. So I've talked with John Lyons about it. We're trying to sort this out. The record, the file on this is a little complicated. It's another thing we're going to hold over really till we get legal advice on exactly what we should do with this and how to do it. I think, you know, the key element here is fairness in all, in everything we try to do and I think that may be a little lacking here, so.
Does the, well, I'm sure it's going to be one of your questions to John Lyons. Does the approval of a parking area exclude you from parking on the road? I mean, Werthenburg Road, that's my road. There's one sign that says, no parking for here to the next mile.
No, it wasn't that. It was actually on the site, on the property, the designated parking areas and other places on the site, on the private property.
Oh, so she's actually created another parking.
Right, additional parking areas. They were not on the site plan.
So I find it hard to believe that the zoning officer is out looking for her parking cars. I mean, is there a neighbor that's just annoyed? Is that what's driving her?
There have been neighbors complaining.
Okay, so it's too busy in the neighborhood and they're.
You'll find that the letter by the ZEO is copied to a couple of the neighbors.
Yeah, and.
Is there a potential resolution of giving her a secluded look so it hides the cars?
I think there's always potential for resolution, yes.
I think you might find there's another problem besides.
It's tied to her permanent for the B and B.
For the bed and breakfast.
No, I realize that, but, you know, some people could show up, four people in a room and they each bring their own car. I mean, if she had someplace to hide them. We all know that she's probably renting out more rooms than she's supposed to.
Yeah, there's, yeah, there's, yeah, yeah.
This is the one with the hunting thing last year.
Yes, yes.
There's a lot of unrelated issues.
Yeah, but we always want to make sure whatever we do, it's fair and it's appropriate.
I agree.
So, seeing that John is back. Welcome. No, 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 no.
We're too late. We're going to adjourn. Well, folks ought to get here on time, McGuire.
And, no, this is good. Has everyone had a chance to read Art's report on this? And if anyone has any questions, you know?
No.
Basically, it's, I think it's something that the town board, when they rezone, should have done anyway. I think it makes perfectly good sense. So I will read the resolution and see what you all think.
Michael, in terms of that, I'd just like to give a couple of peremptory comments, I guess. And I, my, my report, the report that I've prepared for the, for the planning board's consideration goes through the 10, the 10 criteria that are set forth in the, in the zoning law and basically concludes on, on each of the points based upon my review of the documentation that John and his planner, Dan Schuster, provided to the town board and my review of that documentation, that what is proposed through this petition is, in Woody's words, so typically used, the right thing to do.
Yep.
What is happening here is that there's an established neighborhood, 42 acres roughly in area. There are 37 lots within that neighborhood. I believe as many as 35 of those are already developed. There are only two parcels in the neighborhood that even with the proposed designation as a neighborhood infill overlay district would have subdivision potential, one being a 5.2 acre parcel fronting on Route 9 and the second being Mr. McGuire's 6 acre parcel fronting on Ackert Hook and I believe also McGuire Lane. The proposal to classify this area as a neighborhood infill overlay district does not supersede the underlying RC5 designation of the property. It provides an overlay, a complement to the RC5 designation. That complement does two things. It modifies the arum bulk regulations within the district to those of the RM1, the residential moderate density, 1 acre district, meaning that the parcels in the district that are greater than 2 acre, of which there are only two in number, can potentially be subdivided into 1 acre lots and that throughout the entire NOI district affecting all 35 or 37 properties, lots can be, not lots, but development of the lots through expansion or whatever of existing structures or new construction can occur in accordance with the arum bulk standards, the setback standards, as for instance, in the, in the RMI district, RM1 district instead of the RC5 district. The bottom line is, you just dealt with, upon referral from the ZBA, two matters of variance elsewhere in the RC5 district that would probably not come into play if they were within an area governed by the NI overlay district. And the NI overlay district is not a new creature being created for this particular neighborhood. It already exists in the zoning law. It just wasn't applied to this neighborhood, but was applied to a very similar situation in the Hamlet of Sopasco. The other thing that the NOI designation does besides allowing the greater flexibility that's involved with the RM1 arum bulk requirements is to restrict the uses that are allowed within the NOI to actually take away some of the uses that are otherwise allowed in the RC5, most specifically some of the commercial type uses and the multiple family uses that are allowed in the RC5 that can, that can, that can live more appropriately on a 5 or 6 acre lot, but are not appropriate to the general lot, the existing lots within this neighborhood, which again are in that, generally in the range of 1 or 1 and 1/2 acres. So that's what's really happening here. It's a, it's a loosening up of the arum bulk to allow a little bit of additional subdivision, some infill development in a, in an existing neighborhood, to do that at the RM1 district standard and at the same time to remove from that neighborhood the threat, if you will, of the inclusion of some RC5 uses that are not appropriate to an established neighborhood. I recommend to you the, the report. I know you're going to go through it point by point, but that's essentially the.
What are the examples of removing the threat in the RC5? I mean, what could be driving, and we're only talking about one lot or two lots?
No, in the, no, in the RC5, okay, let's look at the.
But there's two lots in this.
Okay, we're looking at the development potential. There are two lots.
Right.
There are two lots that, if designated NIO, neighborhood infill overlay.
Right.
There are two lots that are not presently subdividable, that could be subdivided.
Right.
Okay, those can be subdivided as, into 1 acre lots. If you achieve the maximum, absolute maximum amount of those lots and ignore the fact that at least in one case there's an existing residence and other improvements on the property, you might create 11 lots. You'd need a heck of a good engineer to survey it and work it out.
Right, right.
Okay, so that's the one side of the equation. The other side of the equation is the RC5 district allows multiple family dwellings to be built or to be, or to occur by conversion of an existing single family. It allows guest cottages and allows some limited commercial uses, roadside stanzas, for instance, I think it happens to be one of them, that are not appropriate to settling down in the middle of that particular neighborhood, but are currently allowed under RC5. Upon designation of, as NIO, those uses will no longer be allowed.
So why, why have a reference? I thought you said it complements or something the RC5. What is left of the RC5? That's.
It's still the underlying district such as we have that.
Still the underlying district around this.
Well, it lies under it, but it's like we have that soil mining overlay on White Schoolhouse Road. It's still RC5 there, but within that district, soil mining is permitted.
I guess my question was simple. You said it doesn't supersede the RC5.
Well, I mean, it doesn't replace the, it doesn't replace, that's what, it's simply an overlay. It's like the, the Rhine Cliff overlay which.
Right, no, I was wondering if it gains not only the NIO district, but the RC5 and RM1, so it actually is a very unique and has more privileges than any place. No.
No, no, it doesn't.
No.
No, it doesn't.
It kicks out RC5.
Right, that's what I was looking for. Thank you.
Yeah, yeah. It adds, it adds some, it adds some things that are, it adds the opportunity for a limited amount of additional development that's consistent with the neighborhood and as you see in the report, consistent with the statements of the comprehensive plan and takes away the opportunity to create some things in that neighborhood that are not consistent with a heretofore established neighborhood.
And with that, I will read. In response to the town board's referral of November 12th, 2013, and in accordance with the requirements of Town Code, Chapter 125 zoning, Section 125 32, the Town of Rhinebeck Planning Board hereby issues to the town board the annexed report of planning board concerning the petition for zoning amendment submitted by John McGuire for designation of certain lands within the rural countryside RC5 district described therein within a neighborhood infill NOI district. And.
You're reading what? The?
The draft resolution, issuance of report.
Oh, I thought you were reading the report of the planning board.
I don't think so.
Oh, okay, just the draft resolution, huh?
You want to go home? But.
No motion.
Okay, I have a motion by Melody. Second? Any further discussion?
You agree with the report then?
Yeah, we agree with the report. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Okay.
Okay.
Oh, come on.
Michael?
Yeah?
Could I have the, I guess I'm going to pass this along to Joan in a little different fashion. Who was the motion in the second on that?
Melody motioned and.
I second.
And Jesse seconded.
Okay.
Basically, we just did, we recommended to the town board that they give you your zoning change. So if they do the right thing.
Do you have a copy of this, John?
Well.
Yes.
Okay, very good. You're welcome.
Merry Christmas.
Absolutely.
See you, John.
Thank you, John.
Joan, I will integrate the resolution and the report and just kick it to you, so. Just why I asked, record it, the motion in the second.
Mr. Chairman, who is the current zoning enforcement officer?
Christian Tettey is the current zoning enforcement officer at the, at the present time. As you all know, Dave Baldorf has retired from the ZBA. I believe Michael West will take over his chair, so there's a, there's a vacancy on the ZBA. When Elizabeth is sworn in as supervisor at the reorganization meeting, there'll be a vacancy on the town board. What they're doing is they're asking people who are interested in that position to send in their interest, their, an application to be appointed by the town board. It's a two-year remaining term. That person will serve for one year and then run for the second year in the November election. And then should they win, then they would run for a full four-year term. That's the way the state has set this up. No, this is for the town board, town board.
The cheese vacating.
Right. Yes, sir. You're all set. You're all set. We have one more thing from the ZBA. Darren Page, 20 Hutton Street, area variance requested increase from 6 feet to 10 feet as permissible fence height in the residential low-density RL5 and Rhine Cliff overlay districts. If the area variance is granted, the proposed installation will be subject to requirement of special use permit because it is within that area. I know in the past we've had a number of requests for higher fences in Rhine Cliff. And my recollection is we have turned them all down. The idea was we don't want it to look like a bunch of, you know, little fortress installations. We want it to be open. We want it to be, you know, a neighborly sort of a thing. I personally see no reason why this should be an exception to that myself. It's in the overlay district. It's, you know, I don't.
Isn't there a significant amount of chatter down there about the noise that comes from that pool from the neighbors?
That I don't know.
Seems to me when he was here before with another application that that was one of the comments that came out of.
That's possible. That's entirely possible.
It's, it's what he has in his application. Yes, it's to block the noise from the neighbors that they want to. So I've never been to this house.
No.
Is it, the ones that have previously come to us, they're right down the strip and they kind of wanted to put up a big fence to clear up. Is this?
No, it's more up on a hill, sort of pushed back up. It's, they just got a variance and it'll be coming before us for an addition on the house for the increased footprint.
They want to do a big addition.
Yeah, well, that's been.
About a year and a half ago.
Yeah.
And they, and they got.
The tower and everything, he looked too high.
And the ZBA just granted the variance for roughly 150% increase in footprint for their building.
So this is a viewable fence?
Oh, this, well, they say it'll be viewable. They're going to put plants on it apparently, things of that sort. The one thing is, it will have to come before the planning board for special use permit and site plan because it is within the Rhine Cliff overlay. But then, of course, the addition of the house is going to have to come before us.
I, I personally think somebody should look at it and see if it's appropriate and if the neighbors want it. Because they're going to come here and say, no, we don't want it. Everything should be looked at. I mean, the ones we've denied were down the middle of the strip.
Well, the ones we denied too, we were, it was a special permit we were denying. It wasn't a variance request. It was actually a special permit. Because the thing that interests me here is the 6 feet or 10 feet, in those cases, that came to the planning board. It did not go to the ZBA, that we were given, that we apparently felt at that time, we had the authority to grant or not grant.
Because it was in Rhine Cliff.
Because it was in the Rhine Cliff overlay area. That the only two bulk regulations that we couldn't waive was the 2,300 square foot maximum gross floor area and the 35 foot, no higher than that. But that anything else, we could. That's why I was a little surprised this went to the ZBA.
It shouldn't.
Instead of us.
The surprising thing here is any request for a 10-foot high fence.
And it's up on top of a hill.
It is.
Yeah.
It's next to the church parking.
Right.
It's the highest part of.
Right, of Rhine Cliff.
I could see if I was sitting in the village and looking up and saw just nothing but fence, it'd be ugly.
Mm-hmm.
If it's blocking the sky. But if it's hidden, if it's going to have trees in front of it, then, you know, if the neighbors want it.
And that I don't know. I do know that regardless of what happens with this variance, it still has to come before us to be approved under special permit site plan.
10 foot, so it must continue to climb up the hill if they need a 10-foot fence.
I'm honestly not sure of the configuration.
I understand that, like, if you're standing, you have to have 10 foot because of the way it, like, drops off.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
So if you were, like, standing at the pool, people would see you or, you know, it has to do with the site.
It's at a lower level than the pool?
Exactly, it's, like, at a lower level.
So if they want to block the waves, they're going to bring it up 10 feet?
Well, my take is we're not qualified to make, make a recommendation one way or the other because we have, we don't have enough information.
We don't have any allegations. We don't.
Yeah, they don't have to, because the girl, like, finished with the designer or whatever brought up a thing, he gave it to her, that's great.
No.
Well, then we can't act if we haven't seen it.
I think that in the future, we should ask that they do bring it to us because otherwise, how in the world can we make a reasoned?
Based on the information, we can't make an.
Yeah, I think it's a similar, similar, what am I thinking here, resolution that we had before on that other one where we had no idea what it looked like.
I do recall that the neighbors don't want to see anything.
Yeah, and that may well.
A young couple came in here with a baby and they're just like, you know, they're our neighbors and we don't want to see this big thing. We want to, so.
Shall we just, by resolution, just say that, you know, we feel we do not have adequate information to make a reasoned recommendation to you. Use your best judgment and we'll see it when it comes before us and we can have the information.
But if they, if they grant the variance for height, you can't, you can't deny the special permit based on the height.
No, not on the height.
You realize the height isn't, not going to be a issue of consideration.
Right.
It's also one of the biggest pieces, single pieces of property in Rhine Cliff.
It's also a non-complying lot, however, in its district.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Actually, I think if it was even in the RC5, it would still have issues with setbacks and things like that.
Yeah, yeah, that's what I'm saying. It's a non-complying lot in that district.
No matter how you cut it, it's non-complying. But, okay, so I think the resolution we feel comfortable with is that we don't have sufficient information to make a reasoned recommendation to the ZBA on this.
Yep.
Could I hear a motion to that effect?
Somewhere.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Excellent.
Can we make the point that if there is certain validation of things that goes before the zoning board, they should just pass them on to us?
I think that's what we should do is ask them, anything they get, we should get, or we can't make a recommendation.
They should pass it on to us when they're moving this.
Yes.
He voted not to recommend it to the ZBA, but the ZBA already voted.
Oh, on the 10-foot, they already voted on it? Oh, I thought they just accepted the recommendation. Yeah, I think, because if they actually voted on it before the 30 days was up, a recommendation, then they've got to do it again.
Okay.
Just, you know, but I think that. That covers it. That covers it. Anyone else have anything else? Woody?
Woody does.
Woody, yes, sir?
A motion, we adjourn for the rest of the year.
Second?
Second.
All right, I think that works for me. We stand adjourned, it's been a good year.
Yes, and Merry Christmas to you all.
Absolutely. When we reconvene, we'll have a, new people in different positions within our town government.
I guess they have their organizational meeting.
Yeah, I'm not sure when that meeting is.
They typically hold it late.
Yeah, I'm trying to think if there's anything else.